This will be a meeting, a special meeting for the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees, August 4th, 2022. Roll call through.
Richard, your call?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
All right. Schedule business. Discuss, approve, award, review, reject, in order deny action on the following. IMAs, discussion with possible action, contract with digital ticket for digitalized ticketing system. That's in your packet and was sent out to us yesterday for review. Aaron, do you want to take the floor and explain?
Yeah, anybody got questions though? I mean, does want me to explain or do we explain what the whole digitalized system is? I can explain it. So, last couple of years, we've kind of been pushing for a digital ticketing system. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Can I stand? That's it? A digital ticket writing system, most because I think it's a lot more efficient than sitting on the side of the road for 10 or 15 minutes trying to write somebody multiple tickets. With this system, you can write up to five tickets, I believe, on same ticket and it takes the same amount of time. All you have to do is push a button or you click and add the citation is and it adds it to it instead of physically handwriting every single one of those tickets. Along with that, it makes her job a lot easier because there's a software that goes to our court system, Sutterfield, where it automatically downloads to it. So Shelley should no longer have to be manually entering these citations, which is, since you pull up, it syncs to it, it's done with, right? So, she, it makes her job a lot easier, our job a lot easier, like I said, more efficient mostly. And it's really user-friendly, really easy to use. So for instance, Cliff, you already pulled over. All we do, you know, it's like the same thing on GPS, little, how they scan your stuff, it's kind of similar to that. I take your license, I scan it, pulls up all your information. All I have to add to that is your phone number, who your employer is, that's it, and what the citation is for. That's how long it takes. So it's really simplistic, really easy. Like I said, I think it just makes it all more efficient.
Would this be able to tell us if somebody's driver's license wasn't theirs?
Wasn't theirs.
A mistaken identity or some, I mean, their, his false ID? Or would you have to go back to?
I think we probably done before that, maybe before we ran it. Or even it's a fake ID?
Right.
Usually we can tell. We don't have, I mean, it would, if we, if we scanned it and nothing came up, yeah, I would say it wouldn't, it would show nothing.
Because that's the only way to scan, okay.
Well, or we can type, you manually type the number in if it doesn't see it.
What do you mean by scanning?
You scan the, on the back of your driver's license. Everybody wants to look, there's a barcode, there's a.
Barcode, yeah.
Your law.
No, it didn't, there's a barcode about there, so all you're doing is scanning the barcode and it pulls up all your information. Where you live, your height, weight, all your identifiers, it shows all that stuff.
Pull up the insurance too?
On the ticket stuff, no. That's a whole other system that we already have.
That's, that's in your car?
Yeah, that's in our car already.
So does this go to each car or do you got to take it by shift or?
It's, yeah, it's, we're asking for two of them and they'll stay at the police department and just check them out, every, every shift, whoever's using it. The reason I say two is in case we have two officers working at one time. So we at least have one for each officer. But it's like, so it has a printer and it has the actual unit, so all you do is you, it's like a little bag, you just hang it up on your seat or something, whatever, and the printer's there and you just, when you're done citation, you just push print, print it off, you're done.
It gives you that little color receipt, like a color plug for that?
Just.
I got one out of my pickup right there.
I have one on my desk, yeah.
Harold, it's the same thing. It, it looks exactly the same.
Let me say about it too, is it's printed off of a printer, so.
It's neat and readable.
It's readable, so somebody who gets a carbon copy of a ticket is trying to figure out what their coordinate is, sometimes that's what they do. Do they get the carbon or do they?
So, I got some, I pulled work for, when, there's four copies and I write, my, I put part of that all the time and it doesn't go all the way through. They can't not read what's on their citation, so I go back and rewrite for a day and all that stuff.
It looked like that. In Manford.
Who got the ticket?
Tiffany did.
Well, don't feel bad. Can you, can you? I went to the control and pulled me off over for break light, was it?
I wish they would have done that because I called them and asked them about deferral and they told me I have to go forward, so.
What happens if?
Like am I talking to Shelley?
What happens if you drop and break it?
So I, from what I read in that, and I'll get to you in a second, but the, from what I read in that contract is releasing it from them, right?
Right.
So it's a monthly on basis, if you don't want them anymore, you give them a six day notice.
Oh, there's not a 12?
And they take it back. They can take it all back. So in that, I think it's all included repairs, they include cop, the paper, all that stuff. If anything happens, they're, they replace it.
Okay, that's, that $600 is quite, quite a ticket.
So if we were to do the other way, you buy all this up all outright, that's $20,000 and we own it. And we're responsible for replacing anything that's.
I wouldn't like that.
Yeah, no, that's why we decided to go with the, that's why we wanted to present to you guys the lease.
Right. So what did we approve last year during your, the budget for the police department?
You approved to purchase it, but after Aaron and I were looking at it, we decided doing the monthly lease is better because it's going to take four and a half years to pay off if you bought it. So $680, it's going to take four and a half years of paying $600 to reach the $22,000. Well, in that four years, you know they're either going to upgrade the system or you're going to end up with some, something that needs repairs and so to us, it was, the better route was to go with the monthly lease.
So what happens when we have, like let's say we have the wine festival, for example, and we got four coffers and we only have two of these?
We, we're still able to rewrite tickets.
How much confusion would cost her?
I don't think it'd be any confusion to you, I mean, you still enter them the same way if they were different.
I mean, two different programs, I'm just asking.
So what does the, it will automatically sync into the computer system that we have. They have, that's why we have to pay Sutterfield $1,100 a year to maintain that where it automatically goes into our system.
But if you rent like let's say three, do they give you a better break or?
No, it's still $680.
It's the same price.
It's still $340 at least.
Doing it this way, month by month basically is what it is, we're able to add another unit anytime we want. So if we thought for some reason two was not working, we'd have to come to you guys obviously or however that works, get approved for one more or two more, however we want to do it, but that, that process would be simple because we already, we already have all the software and all those things to do.
How much would that cost?
I don't have, was it per unit, it's $340.
It's $300 a month per unit.
Is the idea to make the existing tickets that you just generally gave out month after month to be able to write the ticket out easier and get it to the town home?
Yeah, more efficiently and.
It's not.
Go ahead.
It's not to give more tickets.
No, no, that's not, that's not the problem at all, no.
That's saving $200 a year to your budget, how does that affect that?
Well, we had budgeted in to actually purchase the system, so we budgeted $22,000.
Didn't we budget for last year though, and again this year?
Yes, because we never got the actual purchase done last year. So the number one complaint, other than people getting pulled over when they call me, is they cannot read the officer's handwriting and they can't ever see like how much it is on the ticket. They get the third copy because when they write a ticket, there's three copies and that, that person is the third, so it was, sometimes you can't read it. I mean, so it's going to be better for the person who got pulled over, they have all the information and they can actually read it.
David, I'm sorry.
It's all right. I, I wanted to try to get expansion on how it's going to improve Shelley's processes for loading the data in the computer. I mean, have you seen it? Did you go somewhere to another town that is using this stuff or was they unable to explain it to you from his own past experience?
I haven't seen it, but I don't think it'll be.
It, it should make it work, it has to do very little.
It uploads at the PD. In Sutterfield, the computer software that we have for court, they work closely together.
Okay.
Making sure that that link is there.
We're paying that $1,100 to Sutterfield for their, to, this is a software to sync it together basically, so it automatically just goes together. It should make her job where she, all she has to do is look on a computer every day, she can see what tickets were written.
Yeah, in other words, she won't even have data entry on the ones that are done on the machines.
Yeah.
That sounds pretty cool to me.
Well, and that's kind of an issue, some also, like he might be busy in the mornings so he's not able to bring tickets right over in the mornings and there's people that get a ticket overnight and they're calling eight o'clock in the morning wanting to pay it and we didn't have the information to even put it in the computer to access their payment. So now with this, she can have it the very next morning and take the payment.
I mean, it, it's almost instantaneous. If I was to write, go out here, write a ticket and pull up and it automatically uploads, it could happen within 30 minutes probably.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's pretty quick.
One of the advantages I see is that, and probably the most attractive advantage that I've seen is that we used to have four people in the office and we now have three, which is keeping them very, very busy. So I think any of Shelley's time that we can free up would be much better spent on other projects because I've been in here multiple times when she's taking a handwritten ticket and typing all of that in and it will just, I, I have, in my own business, I used to write when I met with people, wrote everything out by hand and now I'm doing it all on laptop and it's, plus other people can now read it, so, and that's a big advantage too, so I, I think it's a good thing. My, my question to Aaron at first was, why are we getting two? And he thought I, I meant, why do we need to? And what I meant was why are we only getting two because I'm in the patrol cars? But he explained to me when there's two officers out, each of them would have a unit in their car and it would be kept at the PD on a charger, I'm assuming they grew, they between the two.
I think it'll help the dispatcher also, she won't have to put all that in, will she?
No, it's a.
Does it upload over there also?
Yeah, because it also goes with others, yeah, it goes with other software too, so it'll be still in our system also. What about your, the whole?
How's our court process with the judge or is that?
I don't know, that, on that side of the.
Is that the, he gets the data you've typed in, so.
I still think I have to run my dock and everything the same way, which running a dock is not that hard.
I'm sorry, Aaron.
Aaron.
I'm thinking, I'm feeling that this is kind of a modernization project for our police force. That's, that's the way I see it. You know, again, based on what, you know, you told me earlier about, about the stuff, about how, you know, Waco-Muss is using it, you, you work with it at?
They sure are.
Something similar.
I said they sure are.
You know from experience.
I do.
I think most, most municipalities probably use some kind of digital ticket writing system.
Yeah, it may not be this exact same one, but, so we're kind of behind on it, catching up or trying to.
I don't know, I, I think so probably, yeah.
Okay. That's all I got on it.
I'll make a motion to make a contract with digital ticket for two handheld units at $600.
680.
Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
I just need to.
Thank you for coming up front.
I'll just try to sit over there, get a blind eye.
You said it was 680?
Yes.
If you guys have any more questions, I'll be, I'll answer them.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, item B is discussion with possible action on trustee handbook. Let me, let me go back, I know I said this a month before last when we first brought it up. This came about because of a training session we had with Almag, the Home and Municipal Insurance Group, who are our town's liability property insurance carrier. And they did a seminar for us one night after board meeting that was probably at least an hour long, maybe, I don't know, maybe more, but one of their recommendations was adoption of a town trustee handbook. This is from, I can't remember the community, Tiffany, I don't know if you do or not, and I got it and changed wherever, I, I don't remember if it was at Wasso, it was somewhere I think of in the Northeast, but it doesn't matter, but I changed their name to Hennessy and, and that's basically it. So we can do this however you guys want to, we can go through it pretty much line by line. Called a special meeting because I felt like we didn't need to tie up a regular board meeting with this, that we needed to just devote the time to it. My recommendation, and you guys feel free to tell me what you want to do, but I would like to say if we're not done by eight, that we pause where we're at and either if we don't have much left, finish, finish up at the next regular board meeting or even call another meeting. I just feel like, I don't know about you all, but I feel like after going through the same thing for that length of time, pretty soon my brain's mush. What do y'all, what's your input? What do you, how do you want to go through it? I, I know you all have had a chance to look at it, you probably made some notes in it.
Pause card.
Okay.
I've been through it, I can't remember exactly how many drafts, you know, was sent out. I know at least two, wasn't it Tiffany?
Well, I'm on the trustee handbook.
Because I reviewed it myself, you know, several times and I'll be honest with you guys, I don't need to go through it again.
Okay.
That's where I'm at, but I'm more than willing to sit here and go through it with you guys if you want to do that.
David, I agree with you, Tiffany, when you first said it, I read it and I didn't see, you know, I'm ready, I'm ready to vote. Yes.
I read this today, I came and got another copy from Tiffany because I couldn't find mine, I was, I sat down and read this this afternoon and I was very pleased at how it was laid out. So I'm, I'm also convinced that I'm ready to vote on this.
I don't think we need to send it to either.
There is, just.
Can I put a question on the floor?
Sure.
Once, once we, once we vote this in, is it going to be permanently locked down or will we consider it a living document as time progresses? Will we be able to maybe, you know, in one of our board meetings, to make changes on it?
Absolutely.
And say something's not working and maybe Tiffany's going to want to come in with a change, suggestion on it. Are we going to work it that way?
Yeah, that's just like our ordinances, I mean, anything that the town does is pretty much living documents.
Okay.
They could be changed, amended, deleted, any, any of that at any time.
I'm, I'm very good with that.
Harold, do you have anything?
There was, just last time.
And if you all made.
If you look on page 16, and I had this on my note on my other one on my desk, that under the vice mayor, it says move or make motions on agenda items at board meetings. I think that that needs to be down to board members also. It needs to be on all of them, but.
Yeah, I agree.
That's, that's the only one that somebody had pointed out at that, the last time.
Some forms of government do not allow the mayor to vote or to make motions. Our form of government, we all share equally and anyone else can make a motion or vote, so I think that's, I think that's good to me because if, I don't want somebody down the road to look at that and say only the mayor, vice mayor can make motions or take Have you all made any additions or corrections to anything that you want to bring out?
I made some earlier in this process and they've been incorporated.
Okay.
By any of that, how can we approve that when we've got to make changes already?
Do you play?
How would we approve this and then we're going to come right down here to make that change already?
You just approved with that change.
What's the change?
And I would have put that in this document and given you a fresh copy, but I've got to get the word version from Bert, he only said it at PD, so.
Oh. You can't vote?
I have to.
I'll give it to you. And in one reason, I took respond, this responsibility on myself, I felt like it dealt with, or since it dealt with the trustee, the trustees' role and that sort of thing. I didn't want to put Tiffany in an unfair position to think, for any board member to think she was writing rules for us because that's not the case and it's not the case that I wrote them either, I borrowed them. And it even says copyright down there at the bottom and it's not me, so.
What form of government you calling that?
We are a statutory town form of government, which means that we, we were set up originally by statute as a town and therefore we are a town trustee form of government. There's a lot of confusion there, Harold, because, and there's even some places in here that when I was changing things, there's still some places that call us a council and those probably need changed to board of trustees because everybody calls us a town council or city council, we are really not, we are a town board of trustees.
We're all five elected, these two ladies here are elected?
Correct, yes, correct.
And Tiffany is hired, she's a hired, hired town administrator?
Right.
It gets so confusing when you look at some of the forms of government that y'all, there's one that town manager's elected or whoever you want to say. A lot of people think that that's what we are, but.
I think a lot of it held to confusion when I held the town clerk position as well as the town administrator. Because the town clerk is elected, but the town administrator is hired.
Now who writes the agendas up? Who's supposed to write the agendas up?
Kay.
Katie does the agendas.
So do we come to her or do we come to you?
Well, and that's been confusing since she's no longer in the office, but they come to me in the nicer, the more.
On page five, it, at the top, it explains, it explains the forms of government that are set out by state law. The aldermaning, where the mayor has the most authority, council manager, where the manager has authority on our day-to-day operations, strong mayor, again, the mayor has extensive authority. Town trustee is flexibility for elected officials to decide how they want to handle things and, and should have clear rules, which is basically what this document established, so.
See, a lot of people think we're aldermaniac mayor.
Aldermaniac? Okay.
Just thank you.
I, I, there are times in my life that certain.
Yeah, when you tell her she has.
Obviously Bert, you need to calm down.
I've read this thing about 500 times, I mean, there's some things I don't like, but about eight, five percent of it I agree with. And, and like you said, if we don't like it, we can always put it in front of us and maybe get that first map or not that first, part of it out.
I, I like it, I, I'm kind of like you all, I have seen some things in it that, that I really, really liked, some of it not quite as much. One of the, you know, I, I think the most helpful thing for the town will be, we give our employees a handbook and a guideline to go by, but other than state law and what our ordinances say, the town board itself has not really have, hasn't had a code of conduct, so to speak, and 90, probably 90% of what's in here is dictated by state law anyway, it just kind of combines it all.
It's like being on page three to part B, every one of them lives from A to H, do they, are them, are them going to be on our, start being on our monthly report?
Well, I don't.
Well, we do annual evaluations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Expenditure reporting by department, you know, implementing.
Those are done quarterly, your expenditures are done in the quarterly report.
But are they going to be done monthly though? I mean, this is what this is saying, it's monthly.
Does it say monthly?
Yes, monthly financial expenditure reports.
I personally think quarterly is enough.
At my deal, I don't, I don't really see it on there and I talked with Bert about this, to me, a major business coming into town, it'd be kind of nice to know that we are getting it, you know, just like the people have asked both of us and we didn't know that we're maybe getting one.
Getting what?
Laundry mat or that.
Oh, I don't even know that.
You know, so.
A laundry mat?
You know, they say they are, you know.
You know, you shoot a building permit?
They're up there working on it.
There's a floor port.
Where at?
Right across from.
Right next to. No, we will shut that down tomorrow because that individual was told there's no more building on that property until he gets his final plat.
But see what I'm saying though, it's kind of, you know, we didn't know it, you know, and I was with Bert and his wife and Bert's wife told us what it was, you know.
She heard it out there.
So if somebody asks me, what, what is that, I don't know.
That's a lot of people, a lot of people don't come to us or come to me and ask questions or anything like that, so I don't know. I mean, I'm keeping track of all the employees and the water, the sewer and everything and some stuff I just don't see, I mean.
I didn't really think about that.
That's right at my house when I go home and I can keep it listed.
Okay, I seen lawnmowers there about three weeks ago, that's, I mean, and I go to the Family Dollar, so, I mean.
Well, it looked like they were getting ready to pour something, but you don't have to have a permit just.
I thought, you know what I thought, I thought they were starting to work on curbs.
Okay.
I thought they were getting ready to start working on curbs because we told them in order to adopt that final plat, they have to have all of their streets finished and their utilities done. And so I thought, because I seen cement people there, I thought they were working on the curbing.
Okay, I retract that, that there's a floor port. Harold said it's just a pad. When I went by it, it was dark, but I could definitely tell there was an area out there they were working on, so there may not be a floor, but.
Yeah, I had been by them last year for days, but I figured, I figured we'd get a laundry mat, you know, right? You know, but.
I even talked to Mr. Cox about his laundry mat over here.
It might be helpful for the board if monthly, like when you do the.
You want building permits?
Maybe when you do the administrators report, list them or shoot a copy or whatever's easier for you. Because people do ask us out in the community, hey, what's going on? And it's almost kind of embarrassing to say, oh, I don't know, but we didn't, you know.
Did you know it's going, what's going up there?
No, I, I didn't hear a rumor there was a laundry mat, but I just thought it was going to be downtown. I didn't, I know they flattened it all out, put the red dirt on it, I, I did not know what else is going on, but I did not, have not seen it, seen it.
Well, I didn't even see the red dirt and I thought, was that there before? Sometimes when I think, oh, did I miss, you know, was that always there or?
Yeah, I saw when I drove by, there was a floor there, but apparently not.
Well, I, I have been. Well, I, I have been by there today, so there, there might be one today.
Day one today, so I stay corrected on that.
And if you would like to see certain information, all you gotta do is let me know on that report. I just try to give you a vague.
Reader's Digest version.
There was this one thing that, back here in the back, I, I can't find it right now. But it says that we need to limit talking and visiting on things for three minutes. Do you think we can cover stuff for three minutes?
The three minutes refers to the guests that are coming to talk about.
Oh, okay.
On citizens' talk.
Not us to, okay. I misunderstood that, that, that's fine.
That's what, uh, cause that's one of the deals I'm gonna bring up. But when you do that, for the three minutes, but when it's a form here, you know, we're discussing it. Does that allow the people in the audience to talk?
No.
You know?
I asked, I asked Tiffany to get us a podium to put up here. And what I would like to see done is for audience members who want to address the board to approach the podium. And because you're right, we get a lot of input sometimes from audience members and, um, I take the blame for that because I've allowed it, but I think we need to have a podium and, I, I noticed in here was a sample copy.
Yeah, it's always.
A, a form for people to fill out if they want to speak. I think that's a good, I think that's a good thing.
So would they fill that out, um, when they get to the meeting that night, or does it have to be?
I would be fine with them filling that out when they come to the meeting. I just think it would be good for us to have a copy so that we know who's going to approach the podium and, and allow them to speak. I do not by any means want to limit the public's access to our meetings. That's not it at all. But we sometimes have had people come who have rehashed the same thing multiple, multiple times over and over, so. I just, I just think it's all about efficiency, kinda like the digital ticket, ticket system. It's to get things more efficient. Bert.
But there might be times that, but there might be times that you wouldn't know that you wanted to comment.
And I think, I think the public could be.
Recognized by the chair. And be recognized, I mean.
Right.
Like I said, you raise your hand and you're recognized, it'd be one thing, instead of just kinda outspoken.
Yeah.
You know?
I have always prided the fact that the town board meetings are pretty informal. And I like that because I feel like, there again, I feel like the public should have access to us and should feel comfortable coming in here. Unfortunately, seldom do they do it. But come in here with their comments. We're elected to represent them. But, um, on the other side of that coin, it just can't become a free-for-all either, so. I don't wanna get too rigid, but I, I would like to make a few changes that. Anything else?
Make a motion, pass, hit the, him, trustee handbook.
I second that.
Do you want to say what the changes?
What's the changes of adding?
Red.
Huh?
Changes it's red.
As red.
Or whatever, who you want to. You wanna measure your snack.
I have measured my second.
Roll call?
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes. Second. Roll call?
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.